Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City Council Meeting of June 6, 2018. At this time, can I please have Pastor Glenn Bowman from the Church of Christ come forward for the invocation?
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for today. We thank you for the ability that we have as people of this country to be able to vote and to be able to exercise that. We know there are so many people that don't have freedom in so many ways, Lord, and we thank you that we do have a voice that can be made. We thank you for the officials that are here that have wanted to serve you in the capacity that they're in, and we pray it shall bless them in all the time that you have them here. We pray that you'll give them wisdom in their decision-making and help us as citizens as well, Lord, to be lights and to be people who are encouraging and who seek the betterment of this community. We pray it shall bless this meeting, that you'll give all of us wisdom and discernment in how to talk and how to speak, and especially we pray for this country, that you'll bring healing and peace and understanding, that people desire your will and not so much their own agendas that conflict with that. Thank you so much for loving us and hearing our prayers. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I'd like to call to order the City Council Meeting of June 6, 2018. Chief, would you lead us in the flag sillor?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Director Maloney.
Faria.
Here.
Johnson Santos. Lewis. Silveira. Valalta.
Here. We do have a quorum. Consideration of Approval Agenda. Do I have a motion? Okay. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Ms. Faria?
Second.
Motion by Silveira, second by Faria, to approve the agendas as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Presentations. Certificate of Recognition, Tim Marison, Career Firefighter of the Year. Certificate of Recognition, Juan Ramirez, Volunteer Firefighter of the Year. Well, thank you so much, gentlemen, for being here this evening. As you know, come up here. Chief Mason Hurley is here this evening, and I'd like him to say a few words about these two men more than I could ever say and know. But I will tell you, we had a get-together of the firefighters' awards presentation in Merced last month, and these two individuals, Juan Ramirez and Tim Marison, were honored at that celebration. And so I'd like our current chief, Chief Mason Hurley, to tell you a little bit about these two men.
Well, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Thanks for allowing us to be here today. It's a special moment, a special time, because every year, our department votes, our peers, our paid staff or volunteer staff, vote to recognize individuals that are within the organization that go above and beyond just the normal duties of helping our community and helping our department. Every year, like the mayor said, we attended awards in Merced by the American Legion of Merced that throughout the entire county, all the departments in the county recognize their firefighters of the year. And we, every year, present awards for ours of a career firefighter and a volunteer because it's so important that we recognize both agencies as one and what they do for us. So this year, we recognized, and the peers, our fire department voted together unanimously to vote Juan Ramirez as the 2017 Volunteer Firefighter of the Year. Now Juan has been with our department for about eight years, very active, has done a lot of education, a lot of training, and very involved with the department to go above and beyond what is absolutely required of being a volunteer. He's always down the station doing extra stuff, helping the crews, and he's a mentor. He helps train the newer volunteers. He's one that everyone steps up to or goes to for assistance, and he's a fantastic role model for everybody within the organization. So thank you, Juan. Congratulations. And just to recognize Juan one more time, as of Monday, Juan is our newest paid firefighter. Very proud of Juan. And this other individual, Career Firefighter of the Year 2017, has spent over 31 years within our organization as a volunteer and a paid employee. Chief, retired fire chief Tim Marison, his entire career went above and beyond what is necessary to protect our community and do the right thing for our community. He's been a mentor to me, he's been a mentor to our entire department, and he is the example of what it is to be a firefighter, and it showed because every day he came to work, it showed that he loved his job, and I can tell you, he could have received this award every year of those 31 years, but he probably refused a few of them because he wanted to share with others. So congratulations, Tim. Chief, I appreciate everything you've done for us, and just I'm glad that the City Council was able to present this award to you as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being with our department. Tim, thank you so much for the 31 years and continuing to make Lost Vanisher Home. Really appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Long line in the succession of volunteer and full-time chiefs, and you're just another link that helped us, our fire department, to be successful, along with others. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Bye. Okay. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation, and detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. When you approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence, and if you have cell phones, please turn them off or place them on vibrate. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum? Please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Jackwell, and I live at 139 Bergen Street, Los Banos. We are coming to you this evening because of a great injustice we feel that is taking place here in Los Banos. We are a group of older, active citizens of Los Banos who have been meeting at the community center on Monday and Wednesdays since the center opened. We sew, quilt, crochet, knit, draw, paint, and enjoy each other's companies. Everyone is welcome to come and learn these crafts and is listed in the Los Banos Spring and Summer Recreation Guide for 2018 under Arts and Crafts and Quilting. We can meet Monday, Wednesdays, from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 for a cost of $10 a month. On May 24th, we were informed that we can no longer use the community center. In that huge building, there is no place that a small group of older citizens can sit and do their crafts, enjoy each other's company, and share the time with each other. We enjoy this outlet and feel that the community center was built for this type of group. If we do get to stay, we would welcome all that would like to come and join our group. Excuse me. While we were sitting in the lobby today, one of the members of our group paid her $10 for June. The check was accepted, but there was no mention of her having to go to the Miller Luxe meeting, Miller Luxe Building for it, that she could no longer use the community center. If it's a conflict of personality with a group called the Circle of Love, we are not a member of that group anymore. We don't want to be associated with it. We have no need of cupboards or closets. We bring the things we're going to work with, the food we're going to eat with us that day, and we take everything back out with us that afternoon when we leave. The group of us that are here are the group that have been paying the $10 every month. A large percentage of us are not in the best of health. We pay the $10 and maybe only get to go to one meeting a month, but we're willing to pay the $10 for it. They say that we have to go to the Miller Luxe Building for our meeting, but if the lady that is in charge there does not go, they will not open the building. Well, we were at the community center today because we were told we could use one of the rooms from 10 till 12. We made phone calls and all of us met there. If we had gone to the Miller Luxe Building because that lady was not there, they did not open the Miller Luxe Building, so we would not have had a place to meet anyway. We're a nice group of people, and we're willing to teach others our crafts. We just want a place to meet. Okay? Anything else anybody wants to add?
I'd like to add to that also that the Miller Luxe...
Okay.
I'm sorry. Oh, Syria Martinez. I also wanted to let you know that...
Since a lot of us have bad health, we have allergies, we have asthma, and when we went in that building, all of us came out sick that one day that we went. And it's not a good environment for us, and it's not clean. And I ask, are they going to clean this? Well, we will when. So when we go to the restroom, we need to know that it's clean. They don't know when they're going to clean it. So I like that to be noted, too.
Okay. If I might ask, would you please, the concerns that you have, we have our Public Works Director here, Mark Faison, and would you please schedule an appointment with him and have one or two spokespeople to kind of let him know your concerns? And you will have a home, and where that home is, you know, we're going to work with staff because we have programs, we have new programs this year with Boys and Girls Club. We have a number of things that we're trying to accommodate everyone, and we don't want anyone to be without a home, and we want you to meet. It's just, you know, sometimes it becomes a scheduling issue. So would you please get a list of your concerns and schedule an appointment with Mr. Faison, and we'll try and iron out everything for you, okay?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
My name is Raul Grineal. I live at 1238 Santa Barbara here in Los Alamos. Mr. Mayor, council members, I just want to take this time to actually to introduce myself. I'm new into this community. I moved here in March, me and my family, from Los Alamos, New Mexico. I've lived in New Mexico for 41 years and thought I would live and die in that wonderful state, but I find myself here in California, and I'm excited for what the future has, and I'm really excited for what I've seen so far, and I'm excited for my children to grow in here. I moved here to become the pastor at the Mercy Springs Church of the Nazarene on Santa Barbara, and the reason I'm coming up here is to address the council, to conform you of who we are and our work as it pertains to the community, as it pertains to this council, and to invite you to something that we're hoping to bring this community together. Obviously, we're a Christian church, and so our work is that of spiritual nature. We are... My task is to help my people, the people who come to the church, to grow theologically, to grow biblically, to grow in Christ-like fashion, but in that, a big part of that is the community. And I believe that a huge, a huge part of what we do is in community investment. I want, more than anything, I feel our call there is to become united. I see Los Banos as a wonderful place with great diversity that reminds me of many of the towns that I lived in in Deming with a huge multicultural group, if you will, of many different levels and people from a lot of diverse backgrounds, and I feel just a heart to unite the community, help the people come together. We follow a mantra that it is hard to hate up close, and so our goal is to grow in our church, but also to have our church get to know the community, because for too long and in too many cases, churches are a place where people go to hide from the community and to get away from the world rather than to find out how they can better become a part of it, and that is not what we're doing. So I'm here to let the council know that part of the work that we do there, as long as I am there, is going to be to unite the community, to support the community, to pray for you, for all of the wonderful leaders of this community, and to help to bring us together for the efforts that I believe brought you even into the seats that each of you are in, for your love of your fellow neighbor, your love of this community, and your love of the people that are here. That being said, I do also want to invite all the members of this community to an event that we're going to hold at the church to kind of introduce ourselves into the community and to try to draw the community together. On the Saturday before Father's Day, June 16th, at beginning of 4:00 till 8:00, we invite the entire community to come to the church where we are going to have a softball game, mush ball, which is a 16-inch softball, so nobody has to bring any gloves. We're going to have free food, burgers, fellowship, cornhold. This is a time where we don't have a hidden agenda. We simply want to invite the community to come to hang out, not only to get to know us, but to get to know each other, because it is unfortunate how many people live next door to somebody for decades and never know who they are. So we want to help people come up close and get to know each other, and so we invite you all to be a part of that. Thank you.
Please send our city clerk an email and letting her know of the event so then we can send that out to council members.
I will, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and St. Rondolo, Los Banos. I'm here again tonight just to remind you of the two events that we have coming up this month. You know, my passion is for business, growing business and bringing new business into town, and so this Tuesday, I'll be doing a workshop for those that want to be an entrepreneur, that want to start a business here in Los Banos, and this helps them kind of get their foot on the ground and get running. So that'll be at 9:00 at the community center. And then on the 27th, the thing that I'm really excited about is that we're going to have a government procurement seminar. That might sound kind of boring to some people, but what it does mean is that our businesses have an opportunity to do business with government agencies. That could be Caltrans, it can be anybody from federal down to our local city businesses. And so this seminar is, and it's not a seminar, it's really a place where you can go and just talk to people from these different agencies, and they'll help you find out how to get on their list to become a preferred vendor, and it can make a huge difference in businesses. Caltrans alone really spends a lot of money in our community, and so you think about all the other agencies that are involved and just kind of extrapolate those numbers out, and it can be really significant for our businesses. So I brought some flyers that I will give to Lucy to hand out to you, so if you have any questions, we would love to answer them for you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum. Oh.
I live here at 1875 Scripps Drive. I wanted to know, so next week, we have no place to go?
No, you have the Miller and Luxe. We're not taking any... Until we can... I want you to meet with Mr. Faison, but for right now, the group will be at Miller and Luxe, and we want to get this straightened out with the instructor, because if that's a problem, we want to make sure that that's not a problem for you.
Even though it's bad for our health?
Well, we've sent city workers over. We haven't discovered anything, and that's why I want you to meet with Mr. Faison to go in more detail, to tell us anything else that we don't know.
Well, thank you.
I'm sorry I can't give you a better answer, but please meet with him. We want to work things out. Oh, Mr. Faison, hang on. Yes, sir.
Well, I gave my card to you. Just give me a call. We'll meet this week. Okay, we'll meet this week. I won't delay you into next week, so we'll meet either tomorrow or the day after. I just have to make sure I talk to my rec division, okay? So we won't delay it at all.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, and we'll go on to item seven, Consideration of Approval of Consent Agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and we voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a City Council member, and tonight we have...
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 210701 through 210999 in the amount of $1,978,105.42. Minutes for the May 16th, 2018 City Council Meeting. Minutes for the May 29th, 2018 adjourned City Council Meeting. City Council Resolution Number 5963, approving Amendment Number One to Professional Services Agreement with CSG Consultants, Inc., for Plan Check and Building Inspection Services for an extended one-year term through June 30th, 2019. City Council Resolution Number 5964, amending the fiscal year budget by increasing appropriations in Landscape and Lighting District Number Three, Los Banos Gardens, for expenditures in the amount of $1,919.08. City Council Resolution Number 5965, amending the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget by increasing the revenues by $210,000 and expenditures by $135,000 in the Building Department budget. City Council Resolution Number 5966, calling and giving notice of the holding of a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 6, 2018, for the election of certain officers as required by the provisions of the laws of the State of California, for a mayor-at-large for a full term of two years, a city clerk-at-large for a full term of four years, a city treasurer-at-large for a full term of four years, a council member for District Two for a full term of four years, and a council member for District Three for a full term of four years. City Council Resolution Number 5967, requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of Merced to consolidate a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 6, 2018, with the California statewide general election to be held on the date pursuant to Section 10403 of the Election Code. City Council Resolution Number 5968, authorizing the city to enter into a piggyback contract with Telcoine Communications Group for the cooperative procurement of Citywide Telephone System Replacement Project Phase One, not to exceed the amount of $61,813. not to exceed the amount of sixty-one thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy cents. City Council Resolution Number five nine six nine, authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Matrix Consulting Group for the preparation of the Los Banos Fire Department Stattritic Plan in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
All right. Is there any city council member that would like to remove an item for discussion at this time? Mr. Faria?
Clerk read on item I. J. Read the amount of thirty thousand. My agenda reads ten.
I sent out a corrected agenda.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
So I missed, I missed that one. I'm sorry.
I sent it out by email.
Okay.
I sent a corrected agenda out by email on Friday morning.
Okay.
And it, um, it was brought to my attention that that was a typo. I had put ten thousand when it should have been thirty.
Thank you very much. I missed the email. I'm sorry. Graduation time.
So item J, it is correct at thirty thousand?
Thirty thousand. Thank you very much.
Mr. Faria, did you want to continue since your mic is on?
Uh, sure. I I have no items to remove. I don't know if any other council member has any items to remove. If not, I would move to approve the consent agenda as submitted as with the item J is thirty thousand.
Deborah, do you have a question? Okay, then you're next. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by Faria, second by Lewis, to approve the consent consent agenda as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, let's go on to item eight. Grasslands Water District Presentation by Rick Ortega, General Manager. Mr. Trazasus, do you want to talk?
Just, just very briefly, Rick and I have been working together for a while now to schedule this meeting. Mr. Ortega, just going to provide an update on grasslands projects, programs, introduction to to grasslands for those of us who aren't totally familiar with what they do. So with that, turn it over to Rick.
Okay. You have a present, uh, video presentation? Okay, let me press a bunch of buttons here, Rick. Uh, let's see. All right. Try one more. How's that? Okay.
Thank you.
There we go.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor, and and members of the council. Public staff really appreciate the time. Yeah, you know, we don't, we don't do this enough. I think we we need to to work on on messaging and communication between between the districts and and with the city. So my name is Rick Ortega. I'm the General Manager of the Grassland Water District. And we also, out of that shop, oversee a Grassland Resource Conservation District and more recently, a Groundwater Sustainability Agency. So just location-wise, we we border the city to the to the east, to the south, and to the north. So we 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 sort of surround the city of Los Banos pretty, pretty expansively. We deliver water supply to seventy-five thousand acres of of habitat to wetlands, state, federal, and private. The private component of that makes up about fifty-five thousand acres. So the lion's share is privately held as hunting clubs, as duck hunting clubs. So regionally, we're we're very important, and and Los Banos is 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 unique that that in fact you have a a large wetland complex in in your backyard, especially given the fact that California ranks first in terms of wetland loss, you know, within the the continental United States. So we've, we've lost about ninety-five percent of our wetlands in in the West, and the grasslands happens to be the largest contiguous block left. And so that's just this fun fact that not many people are are all that familiar with. This, this image is a is a great depiction of that. So that's what the valley looked like about a hundred and fifty years ago. We had upwards of about four million acres of of wetland habitat. And today, we're we're struggling to maintain the last remaining five percent of wetlands. So we've lost ninety-five percent of our wetlands in California. You know, a a community and a state that that prides itself in in being eco-friendly and doing the right green thing, well, this is something that that we we need to continue to work on. Why wetlands are important, there are a number of benefits to wetlands, especially to to humans, but but also to to wildlife. So this is an image of the Pacific Flyway. It's a a highway, a bird highway, that that stretches from Alaska to to Patagonia. And each year, about eight million birds migrate through the Central Valley on their way down and and to breed, and and they breed in the north and and winter in the south. And this is a large overwintering area. And if you don't believe me, get outside, get outside in any direction, mainly to the north, south, and 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 east, and you'll see, you'll see the millions of waterfowl that that we host here in Los Banos every year. Each year, we we host here, just within the grasslands, about three million of those eight million that are are moving through the Central Valley. So let me back up and and talk a little about how it is that that these wetlands were preserved. There was a a federal act taken, a a law passed in nineteen ninety-two called the Central Valley Project Improvement Act. And it was really, the authors were were looking to mitigate for the impacts of developing the Central Valley Project, which is the large federal water project that that delivers water supply predominantly here on the west side. In that act, it identified nineteen refuges that were critical to 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 California to to sustain, and fourteen of which are 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 south of the Delta, and a large block of them are are surrounded right around Los Banos. And we call that the Grassland Ecological Area. So the Grassland Ecological Area is the largest remaining wetland in the western United States, really only second to the Everglades nationally. Single largest concentration of migratory waterfowl found on earth each year are found here in the Central Valley and predominantly in the grasslands. We do a lot for for the region. Our water supply is, falls as snow melt in the Shasta watershed, and, you know, melts and moves through Shasta Dam and into the Sacramento River. It's pumped across the Delta, down to San Luis Reservoir, and then eventually down to the Mendota Pool, where where then gravity flows back to to feed not only this large wetland complex, but also all of the surrounding agriculture, which is, which is a vital component to to all of our existence. This is the outer boundary of the Grassland Ecological Area, and the the salmon color is the private lands. The green is the the federal lands, and the blue purplish are the state lands. So we we deliver water supply to to these other refuges within this complex. An important component to to a healthy wetland complex is what we're surrounded by. And so we've been blessed to be surrounded by a lot of wildlife-friendly habitat that's that's actually in agriculture. And so things that are flooded up, things like alfalfa, you know, in in my mind, any any flooded agriculture is a good thing, which is a big misconception. A lot of folks are very, very pro-drip. Well, drip and microsprinkler, a lot of those modern efficiencies deplete the aquifers. They cause subsidence. There's, there's, there's many issues associated with not replenishing our our groundwater aquifer. That has a a direct tie to human health and safety, right? We need that fresh water replenishing our groundwater for drinking water purposes. Not only that, but also to fuel our our vibrant economy here. I mentioned that we just recently formed a Groundwater Sustainability Agency. So there was some other law that was passed a few years back. And and it requires that all lands essentially be a a component of a groundwater sustainability agency. The state is stepping in saying, we're we're chronically overdrafted in certain areas. We need to start addressing this. So we formed a an agency and are entering into MOUs with the county and and the city and and working collaboratively with with the city staff, which I really appreciate. We're, we're, we're working together with consultants, hydrogeologic consultants, to to really characterize this little sub-basin. And and then moving forward on projects that can actually replenish the aquifer in the periphery of the city and improve water quality of the city of Los Banos. We're, we're partnering on a number of of large infrastructure projects as well. In addition to the boundary of our our groundwater sustainability agency, the county has asked that we take on basically all of the habitat west of the San Joaquin and and also some private privately-held ag land, which which more than doubled our our sustainability agency boundary. So we'll be working very closely with the county, the city, the the other ag districts, like the Central California Irrigation District and the exchange contractors, on developing plans to to accommodate these legislation. This is a, an interesting picture, and it it shows subsidence in the valley. So we're up, that's Sandless Reservoir in the upper left-hand corner. Those two black circles are the grasslands. So Los Banos is sort of sandwiched in between the two grasslands area, which is a good place to be, because it looks like it's subsided very little in the region. The grasslands, we're, we're seeing, you know, some spotty, light subsidence. And then as we move to the east, it becomes more pronounced and and more problematic. The, what we're trying to do is, is, you know, maintain and manage these resources to the best of our extent and the best of our ability. So we need to make sure we're not overdrafting in certain impacted areas and making sure we're we're replenishing. Another big component of what the districts that I manage do is is advocacy, outreach, and education. So we fund through our five oh one C three, that's called the Grassland Fund, an environmental education center located out at the Los Banos Wildlife Area. It's open to the public. It's open to anyone. We really encourage you to get out there and 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 see the habitat. It's great for kids. Also, the San Luis National Wildlife Refuge is a federal refuge off Wolfson Road up there. If you haven't been there, you're you're really missing out. It's a beautiful center, lots of interpretive stuff. We got to get folks, especially our locals, out, you know, more frequently and realizing the the public trust that you have here and 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 how important that is. Wetlands filter contaminants, they 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 strip nitrogen from the system, they clean up the water. They're the kidneys of of society, really, so they're they're critically important.
Mr. Ortega, before you move forward, can you go back a couple of slides where you had the subsidence, that one?
Yeah.
So the, the top colors on that chart represents a higher subsidence?
It, they do, yeah. So the red zones are the most, the most severe. And then orange, yellow, green, in that gradient, and then...
And then the circles that you were talking about, that's around the Los Banos area?
That, that is the the Grasslands Water District down there, or up there, rather. And so, yeah, the city of Los Banos would be just, just to the right of the large blob, which is Sandless Reservoir, and between those two little circles.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The city of Los Banos being completely dependent on groundwater, it's an important component of of the, you know, the the health of the city. So it's, it's a good thing, and I'm glad we're working closely on that. Contact information, my website, the the website, my my email address. I've got a stack of cards if anyone would like, please, please look us up. Go to our website. You can find out more about the area, the significance. Lots of, lots of engagement that that we're working with. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for, for Rick at this time? Yes. Mrs. Lewis, are you okay?
I asked my question.
Okay, all right. Let's go on to Mrs. Santos.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. I I had been out to the wetlands several times, and you guys do a wonderful job out there. So I just wanted to say thank you. That's really great out there.
Yeah, no, it's, it's an interesting component. So we, a vital component to the, to the economy. We did a demographic study about a decade ago, and and we now understand that the, the fact that folks come to Los Banos to to hunt waterfowl, they come out here to birdwatch, they recreate out here, they fish, that brings about sixty million dollars into the the small periphery around Los Banos. And so, you know, Merced County being one of the poorest counties in the Union, it it becomes a critical and vital component of our, of our economies out here. Invite more people. Invite more people. Get out there. Get your kids out there.
Mr. Faria?
Thank you. I want to say thank you.
Yeah.
For coming. These things are near and dear to my heart. I'm, I'm an outdoorsman from early on, and this is, it's very good. I like people to realize Los Banos is a very important place in the world because of these grasslands, these wetlands. We're the last in the Central Valley.
We are the last.
Got to all the way up to Gridley and Calusa to
That's right, that's right.
To the next round, except for the, of course, the Delta area.
The Delta area, yeah, it's different, because that's, that's, that's like river, that's reclaim, and you have the reclaim. It's deeper. It's deeper, so it doesn't provide the food resources for the birds. So this stuff, it's shallow.
That's right.
We manage it very intensively to really maximize the the food that that we get out of the landscape. You know, threats are water supply and encroachment. And so we want to, we're, we're pro-development for this community and pro-business. We want to do it in the appropriate way, which is generally to the west, infill and to the west, as we're trying to really protect an important corridor that links the south grasslands with the north grasslands, critically important for the viability of of the area.
A lot of people don't realize it's that shallow water that's the gold for, for waterfowl.
It is.
For so many, for so many of them.
Their necks are only so long.
Yeah, they, 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 it's that, it's that shallow water. Too deep, and there you, there's a whole bunch of waterfowl that won't feed. And then without the water at all, then they won't be there at all. So it is a unique place, and I love it because of that. And I like to share that with everyone and let them know. And if you haven't been to the San Luis Visitor Center, get out there. It's wonderful. We also have a beautiful herd of tule elk out there.
Yeah, they built the visitor center into the elk enclosure. This is a great time of year. There's tour routes through all, a lot of these private lands. You can, you don't have to get out of your car. You can go with the AC on. And there's, there's more wildlife, you know, in the winter, obviously, but it's, it's always beautiful out.
Yeah. Best time to see the elk is September, when they're bugling.
That's right.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Wait till you see the size of them.
Oh, yeah, they're twelve feet high, they're hentlers, yeah. Six feet high at the shoulder. And they're big.
Any other questions, council? Well, Rick, thank you so much for coming this evening.
My pleasure.
Come back again. Thank you. Okay, let's go on to item nine, public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action... Let's see, let's go back here. And... Come back. All right. Yeah, trying to get back to us. No? Okay. There we go. All right, come on back. See, you punch every button on the panel, and you got to hit the right one sooner or later, so, yeah. So, okay. Public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item nine A, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of a levy of the proposed annual assessment for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen fiscal year for landscaping and lighting districts numbers one two seven and nine two nineteen. And item nine A one, City Council Resolution Number five nine seven zero, confirming a diagram and assessment of levying assessments for landscaping and lighting assessment districts numbers one two seven, nine two nineteen for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen fiscal year. And we are going to go to our Public Works Director, Mr. Fajian.
Honorable Mayor and council members, good evening. Tonight, to complete the preparation of our annual assessment of our eighteen landscaping lighting districts, staff has requested that City Council will conduct a notice public hearing to receive input on these assessments, the annual assessments, and to adopt Resolution fifty-nine seventy that will confirm the diagram and the assessments, and will levy the assessments for landscaping districts one through seven and nine through nineteen for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. This process has to be done every year, whether they're raised or lowered, or if they stay the same, or else the county is not authorized to put this on the tax rolls. Currently, the city of Los Banos administers eighteen landscaping and lighting districts. Some of the items in those districts, it's for maintenance of certain improvements. It's street lighting, landscape, street medians, ride-a-way, storm drainage facilities, water, sewer, waste disposal, sidewalks, street signage, parks, and related facilities, masonry fences and walls, and signage, parks, and related facilities, masonry fences and walls, and traffic equipment. Not all these are in every district, but these are very typical maintenance items that do appear in our districts. In each fiscal year, the City Council holds a public hearing to confirm assessments for the engineers' reports for the landscaping and lighting districts. We, assessment rolls are found in the annual report for each landscaping and lighting districts, and it's prepared by the city engineer, public works director, and city staff. We do an annual report, which you are seeing part of tonight. It's quite big, and this report is what's before you to approve and to assess on. The annual reports are filed with the city clerk, and our landscaping and lighting district notice, it was publicly noticed in the local newspaper on May 18, 2018, with the increases or the changes. I have not received any input from that public notice at this point. Each engineer's report, as you'll see in here, probably very used to this, they consist of Part A, which is plans and specs, which is included just as a reference. Part B is an estimate of the 2018-2019 landscaping and lighting district maintenance and improvement cost. Part C is an assessment to each individual lot, so each lot that's in each district will come across and will have the same amount if it's in whichever section it's in. Part D is the method of assessment, and I believe what you have on here, you do have Part B and D of the engineer's report as part of your staff report. The others are too cumbersome to put in here for you. Part E is a list of the names and addresses of property owners. This is part of the report that goes to the county, so they know who to assess. And Part F is the diagrams. Attached is a table showing the landscaping and lighting districts. It shows its number, its year of formation, its current assessment, its proposed assessment, and Part B and Part D are also part of your engineer's report. This resolution, if approved, allows the city to submit to the county to replace on the tax rolls, and this forms the revenue source for our 18 landscaping and lighting districts for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. This year, just a brief summary of this, we have nine of them that are going up to the maximum. Now, of those, seven are 10% maximum that were set up during the initial setup. Two of those are 5% maximum, and they're based on several things. If it's deficit spending, definitely kicks them into the maximum. And we also have to take into account, you can have 50%, and you should have 50% reserve of your revenue needed every year, and you can take that plus whatever's in your five-year capital to judge if you're going to put this forward. Now, we actually do have quite, first time in a while, we have added quite a bit of capital to help the parks get better as we get healthier in these districts. If we just went the other way, the parks would just continue to deteriorate, and it would be hard to justify what we're spending on them. So we do have a lot of capital. So I said nine are going up, two of them are about 5%. Seven of them are going up by the construction cost index of 2.25%. So that's just the cost of living adjustment. Two of them did not get adjusted at all, and the reason is, is they're carrying surpluses that are above 50%, and they don't have capital that would spin down that amount. So until they get to that point, we're not even allowed to give them a cost of living increase. The ultimate goal of this, and it is ultimate, it is a long-term goal, is to get to where you take all into account your five-year capital, you take into account the cost of living increases, and everyone goes up pretty much by cost of living. That's the goal that we're going for. Now, when we started this, when I started this five, six years ago, maybe more, there was over $800,000 negative in the hole. And it's hard to, it's really hard to look at it that way, it's kind of district by district, but there was $800,000. We're taking a slight step backwards to, at the end of 1819, we'll be at $600,000 about, will be the deficit, we're still below what we started. But based on future projections of growth and future projections, we're hoping by the, all the way into the fiscal year of '22, '23, we'll be at $200,000 negative, and that's basically one district. So a lot of the districts have climbed out, and as they develop homes, as the lot is created, they go into these assessment districts, and we do see daylight in almost every one of them. Talbot Park, the last one, is a little bit different. We have to have some, a little more area developed, and it's in the boundary of it to really for it to clear. So that's one we have to keep working on. But that's my, the yearly report, the engineer's report. If there's any questions, I'd be very happy to answer any that I can.
Okay. Council members, I'm going to open a public hearing first, and then I'll bring it back to council level for any questions, okay? All right. Is there anyone who would like to speak on City Council Resolution Number 5970? Please come forward.
Kathy Ballard, resident of Los Banos. I was looking through your packet, and I noticed on page 158 on the packet, there's a large area that's not covered by landscaping and lighting districts. And looking also at the amount that we pay or we budget for a year of $2,182,000, well, I can't say, it's too high for me. There's a huge amount of money. I don't know how much it is to cover the rest of those areas that don't have landscaping and lighting districts, and I'm assuming that that amount comes out of our general fund. It does show a concern for me, and I wanted to bring it to your attention, or if there is any way that the city could work out so that everybody pays their fair share in regards to those buildings and homes that aren't covered in any districts.
I believe I can partially answer that question, but I'll defer to Mark just a minute. There has to be a general election, and individuals have to vote to include themselves in the landscape and lighting district. So, Mark, I'll, I'll turn that over to you.
Well, thank you. What we do, if you look at the budget documents, there's a maintenance budget line item, a whole maintenance budget, and that's the entire maintenance of the general fund and the landscaping and lighting districts. We do have a charge in from the landscaping and lighting to balance it out, and I believe roughly it's about 50%, I believe, is the cost. I don't know, I don't have the newest one by memory.
Right.
A little bit more than that. And yes, we do, you are right, we do have about 65% of the population that live in landscaping and lighting districts, and it is correct, they're individual landscaping and lighting districts. We do not have a citywide one, so each district's funds have to stay within that district. You cannot trade, you cannot, so that's why we're looking at individually which ones are negative and how to get those out. And the reason that they're negative, to be honest with you, they started too low when they were set up. But at this, the mayor is absolutely right, there had to be a general election to include the ones that are not in landscaping and lighting districts to be put into a citywide one. So, thank you.
Is there any other comments on this public hearing on this item? Not seeing or hearing anyone, or I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council level. And Mrs. Lewis, question?
Yes, Mark. When you said there has to be a general election for the districts that are not included in the landscaping and lighting, is that general election of the city or of the people who live in those areas?
It's citywide.
Okay, so all residents have to vote on that?
No, I think it's, no.
I thought it...
No, I think it's just the residents of that area.
Sonia has a little better input on this, sorry.
Okay. Yes. Miss...
So it's based on how we decide to do the districts. If we did a citywide one, then everybody in the city would vote on it? If we just took the different areas that are not currently covered and split them into either one district or several smaller districts depending on their area, then the residents in that area would vote, not citywide, just the residents that live in that area.
Okay. So would the council have to decide what type of election it would have to be if that were the case?
The council would have to decide that they want to create these districts, and then we wouldn't do it on the ballot for the people in those areas to vote on.
Okay, but the council wouldn't have any say as to whether it would just be the people in those residential areas or whether it would be a citywide election?
Yeah, I think that the council would have to decide how they want to break it up. So it would only be a citywide election if they decided to take all of these districts and turn them into one district.
Including the ones that are...
Including the ones that are existing, correct.
Okay.
If we want to leave the ones that are existing and take the areas that are not currently included, then only the people that are not currently in a district would vote.
Okay.
But if we did a citywide election, then all that money would go into one pot.
All that money would go into one pot, but if you do a citywide election, there's also the possibility that you can lose these other districts that are pre-existing.
Yes, yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to Silveira.
Yeah, I just want to follow up with that. And so, if you did a citywide one, let's talk a little bit more about the possibility of losing. If you put the whole city into a vote and it does not pass, you then lose all of those other lighting and landscape districts, correct? It's not a could lose it, it is a you will lose it.
I believe that that's correct, yes, that you will lose the other districts, that you're voting to create this new district, citywide district, and if it's voted down, then you have to solve the other districts.
Yeah, and I know that it's something that we've talked about before, and that's why when these lighting and landscape districts are set up, they are set up prior to there actually being any residents on them. They are set up when the developer, or there's one property owner, and so that property owner gets to make the decision for all of those lots, where now, going backwards, you would be asking, and it would be property owners, correct, Mr. City Attorney, not necessarily tenants? It would be, the property owners would be voting on it. And to me, you know, listen, I happen to live in a district that, you know, where I live is not in a lighting and landscape district, but, and quite honestly, I wouldn't have a problem myself paying into one, but I think the risk is too high. A, in the area that's not in a district, you're asking people to, that are already getting a service, to now pay for a service that they've been getting for, since they own there. Also, there's something to be said that those folks that have been living there, you know, my house was built in 1980, and some of my neighbors are some of the original owners of those homes. When they moved there, the deal was made when, you know, as part of their property taxes that they paid, that the city took care of their sidewalks and stuff like that. So there's that part of it, and you're asking those folks to now pay into a lighting and landscape district. I don't think that you're going to be too successful in getting people to now pay for something. Not everybody feels the same way I do, that they're going to pay for something that they've already been getting. And then if you do the citywide one, you're really, you're really setting yourself up to now 60-something percent of the city is covered by lighting and landscape districts, but if it doesn't pass, now 0% of the city is covered by lighting and landscape districts. Am I correct in saying that, Sonia?
That's correct. So these lighting and landscape districts were, began to be established in 1988, and so anything prior to that time, it's white, it's out of a lighting and landscape district. It is much harder to get into a district once the neighborhood is filled, like you said, it's an individual vote, for each property owner, not the tenant but the property owner, because it is assessed on the property taxes. However, that being said, it is impacting the general fund at the same time. So if there were lighting and landscape districts in this area, then that would free up over $500,000 for the City of Los Banos to spend on other things.
Exactly, and I understand that part of it, and is it, it has to go to a general election? It wouldn't be a 2018 election.
No, it's not a 2018 election.
So it would be, so the 2018 is the one where the citizens would have to protest, send a protest vote in and reach a certain threshold for it not to happen. This is a general election where you go in and vote, and if it doesn't pass, then you're done, right? Okay.
One thing to emphasize is when people buy a home, a new home, it's disclosed to them. So the first owner in that home knows there's a landscaping and lighting district, it's not after the fact, which is always hard to sell.
No, and it's, it's on your, you know, when you get your...
Yes.
Stuff from the title company, it will tell you that you're in part of that district. It's not something that's new, so that's my comment, thank you.
Okay. Kim, did you have a comment? Or Sonia?
Nope.
Anything else? Okay. Mrs. Lewis, anything else?
No.
Okay. Silveira, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Got all these names here. All right. Okay, if there are no other comments, do I have a motion?
If there are no other comments, I will move to adopt City Council Resolution Number 5970, as read by title.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Freya, second by Mrs. Lewis. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay. Yes, sir. Comment? Okay. All right, let's go on to Item 10, Consideration of a Request from Habitat for Humanity West Side to Waive All of the City of Los Banos Development Impact Fees for the Project Located at 541 M Street in the Amount of $25,138.40. And we're going to go to Community and Economic Development Director, Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a PowerPoint presentation tonight.
Oh, okay. Let's go back to this. One, two, there.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So just a little bit of background on this particular item. As you may recall, back in April of this year, the City Council considered a request for a waiver of development impact fees for Habitat for Humanity West Side. The City Council had much discussion that night, and then directed staff to analyze and provide various options for a policy for future requests, and also to provide or come up, provide, have some discussion with Habitat, and to possibly come up with a solution, an amicable solution. Staff met with Habitat and agreed to defer payment of the development impact fee into two payments. The first payment is due, is agreed to be due upon issuance of an occupancy for 541 M Street, and then the second payment would be due upon issuance of occupancy for 545 M Street. And as you may recall, as was explained back in April, is that a full development impact fee credit was given for 545 M Street, as it was determined that there had been a previous unit there originally, and that this new unit was technically a reconstruction of a previous unit. But it was agreed upon with Habitat to split the development impact fees between the two new units, and so the city will be getting the $25,138.40. We've already gotten that first for 541 M Street, so the first payment has been made by Habitat, and when 545 M Street is ready for occupancy, that second payment will be made. So to discuss future requests for waivers, staff did have an analysis, we provided an analysis, we polled various cities, we actually reached out through our listserv of multiple communities and just asked what type of policies they had for development impact fee waivers or deferrals. We discovered that the majority of California cities do not provide waivers or deferrals, that very few cities do, and those cities that do provide a deferral of development impact fees do until occupancy, which the City of Los Banos, we already provide that as an incentive. It's something we already do. So we saw that cities provided a deferral, the common language that was used was either occupancy or at close of escrow, or for 24 months, whichever was less. So the City of Los Banos, we already provide that. And then we did find that there was a small amount of cities which provide waivers, and those that do have specific eligibility criteria, and typically, they do have an alternate funding source to backfill those waivers. So those are cities that have, are eligible for state funding from housing and community development, so they're given an entitlement from HCD, which is Housing and Community Development. They have in lieu fees, so they collect various types of development impact fees that market-rate houses are paying for, that backfill affordable housing. And then some cities just choose to backfill with their general fund. So I do would like to note for the City Council to keep in mind that staff does not support a fee waiver, and this was within the staff report, reiterated within the staff report. So we do not support a fee waiver policy until or unless a funding source is identified, but staff is providing tonight options for discussion purposes. So there's really two options, what staff has broken down. The first is an impact fee waiver, just for purposes of discussion. This would be applicable to some or all of the development impact fees. So for instance, if the City Council decided to waive some fees but... So, uh, for instance, if the City Council decided to, um, waive some fees but not all fees, for instance, um, possibly waive, um, maybe public facilities or various other fees, but still require police, fire, water, sewer, for instance, that would be up to the pleasure of the City Council. Another idea was to provide full or partial waiver of development impact fees based upon owner continuing eligibility criteria with an affordability covenant for a minimum period of time. So this would, the eligibility criteria, I'm going to get into in a further, into a slide in, in a couple of minutes, um, but this would be for a certain period of time to provide, um, possibly waiving half the fees, and then a partial deferral, um, for say, seven years, as just, uh, an example of a timeframe. Also to provide a partial waiver and deferral of development impact fees based upon owner continuing eligibility criteria with an affordable covenant, and only applicable to affordable single-family properties, and only available to nonprofit builders. So just some examples that, um, staff, what we had seen, and also compiling, um, other programs that the state currently has. So the next option would be an impact fee deferral program. So this would not be waiving any fees, this would just be deferring for a period of time, they would be eventually due. This would be applicable to some or all of the development impact fees, so as I said, either the council could require some fees be paid upfront, and then defer some fees if, if they sew shoes. Could provide a seven-year deferral with no interest, uh, and the principal would be due in full in seven years, or upon transfer, whichever is earliest, based upon owner continuing eligibility criteria with an affordability covenant. This is typical of most HUD-type housing, affordable housing, uh, programs. Or to provide a 15-year deferral with an annual rate of interest, with principal and interest due in full in 15 years, or upon transfer, whichever is earlier, based upon owner continuing eligibility criteria with an affordability covenant. That covenant, as I'm referring to, would be a deed restriction. And then this would be only applicable to affordable, single-family residential properties, and would only be available to nonprofit developers or builders. So the general eligibility criteria that staff has come up with, this would be the, the basis of whether a developer or, um, builder would be even, um, eligible to provide, to qualify for any type of program. So first, they would have to be, it would need to be a single-family residence, it would have to be owner-occupied, so could not be used for rental purposes. It'd need to be for a nonprofit developer-builder. Uh, the project would need to be entitled with the Planning Commission or the City Council, depending on what type of project it is. For qualifying income categories of 80% or less of the area median income, and that would be for Los Banos, so our, our median household income is about $47,000, um, right now, and it would need to be 80 for, uh, to qualify for this type of program, we are suggesting that that type of program be for 80% or less of the median income of Los Banos. That the deferrals would be limited in number per fiscal year, our suggestion would be for five per fiscal year, if, should the council decide to create a policy. They would have a deed restriction for owner-occupied households payable upon expiration of the deferral period, transfer of ownership or sale, so there would be certain triggers that would require payment in full. The homes would need to provide proof of casualty insurance, and have to list the city as an additional insurer, that's also, um, consistent with other housing programs that we have, um, that are guidelines from the state of California. And that, uh, there would be an administrative review by the Community and Economic Development Director or Staff Committee with an appeal up to the city manager. So these are just some idea, ideas, some, um, eligibility criteria as a foundation, as a basis, uh, to create a policy. So first, any type of organization would need to meet this criteria to be eligible, and then, um, we're providing various options for the City Council to consider whether a impact fee waiver is the route to go, or a deferral program. Those various options have been laid out for you as I described, they're also within your staff report. So staff is recommending, um, and requesting that the City Council provide common end direction for an affordable housing waiver deferral, deferral, impact fee policy. And that concludes my presentation, I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions? Mr. Silveira.
Yes, Stacy, so staff is recommending not using an impact fee waiver until such time as they had an alternative funding source, correct? Okay, so then my next question to you is, is when you talk about the impact fee deferrals, do you have any kind of idea of what the staff time and costs that are going to be associated with having to track something for the next 15 years, the next seven years? Um, you know, is it just as simple as putting, you know, something in their deed that says that this will happen, and then we could rely on somebody else to, you know, when, when that, if the sale happens or whatnot, then we would, we would, you know, collect our money then, or is, would it involve staff to having to, you know, follow, do a yearly review of these things, or, I, I, that's kind of my curiosity there.
Uh, let's go to city managers, not city manager, city attorneys buzzed in.
Well, certainly we'd have to track them some way, so if you were like on a seven-year deferral, um, there'd have to be some type of indication that after seven year that it, that it's, uh, due and payable, and the affordability covenant and the deed restriction would cover any transfer of title, like on sale or other type of transfer, so we wouldn't have to track that, we would be notified automatically. Um, Stacy and I were talking about the, the continuing eligibility of the family owning the property, they would have to submit some type of, uh, application on a yearly basis to make sure that they're within that 80% or less of median income, or that would, that could also trigger, uh, a full payment of the, of the deferred amount. So there would be some tracking, but certainly not to the degree of trying to track a loan where we're collecting minimal payments on a monthly basis, and all of that kind of stuff. So there would be some effort, and we, we're, we have talked about including a fee into, into the process, but of course, we'd be getting interest on some of those deferrals as well, so, yes, there would be some staff time, we haven't calculated how much, and, uh, but, there you go.
Okay.
Uh, just one minute.
Yeah, so I, I guess, you know, listen, I, I'm, I was in support of the impact fee waiver, and I, and I think that, you know, I, I get that, that some of the, the things on there, like if you put a covenant on it that said that, you know, if the property is sold, I believe they do it in a neighboring community, that if the property were to sell for profit or out of that organization, that the impact fees would be due then, um, I don't think that, that's something that we would have to really track, and so what I worry about is, is that if you go with some kind, you know, maybe the council's just direction is no deferral, no waiver, whatever, and that could be the way that it goes, but, I mean, it's, to me, it's kind of like all or nothing, either you, we're going to do an impact fee waiver, or we're going to do nothing, because all these other, um, alternatives will end up, I think, costing us more money in the long run than the original, you know, and I mean, I get it, it's today's dollars, um, and then having to track it, and then what if they don't pay, and then what if, you know, then what if, uh, their eligibility on the income doesn't meet our standards, and then, and then the what-if, and the what-if, and the what-ifs, and so, really, it's, it's, um, I mean, I, I would be as far, I don't know, maybe legally, we can't do this, Mr. Vaughn, but it's like, I would make an exception for Habitat for Humanity, that if they had one, that we would be able to work with them, uh, and, uh, but I don't know that that's legal for us to, you know, be specific only to one organization. So, again, my thoughts are an impact fee waiver, especially, um, on, you know, in this situation, uh, that, that originally sparked all of this, where they asked for the waiver, I'm still, it's, in my mind, nobody can convince me any differently that that home that they put in that sub, well, subdivision, it's in, you know, over on M Street, and one of the oldest parts of Los Banos, did not create the same impact on the system as a brand-new home in a brand-new subdivision. So I'm still sticking to that, I still think that we should have a way for an impact fee waiver, um, and, and to an organization that has done a lot, and I get it, we're, we're not quite to that level yet as a city, where we have a special source of funding, uh, special source of funding from the federal government or the state government, that, that gives us a pot of money to be able to do that, but I still don't think that that's a reason not to do it, so, that's kind of my thoughts, and I'm really interested to see, uh, where the rest, the rest of the council thinks on this.
Counsel, may I just give you a little bit of history first, before we, uh, go on? Is that okay? Okay. Um, at one time, we had neighborhood stabilization money, uh, NSP funds, and that was to the tune of $2 million, of which was turned over to Habitat for Humanity to rehab houses. And, um, and then eventually what happened is, uh, the city ended up, uh, tracking all those homes for the, for the payment, and are still to this day tracking some of them, is that correct? Okay, okay. We also donated a property worth $250,000, and then we paid the impact fees on three homes. Now, where did this money come from? This money came from the defunct RDA, and it wasn't defunct at the time, and then, uh, our illustrious governor decided to balance the budget on the backs of the cities of, in California. So that's how the governor came up with his surplus that he's bragging about, he took all the RDA money away, which was $4.5 million a year away from the cities, and, uh, and we had nothing to backfill. So, uh, uh, part of the, the things that, that I kind of discovered with this is that, is that, uh, you know, carving out just, although it sounds nice, carving out a section just for Habitat for Humanity, we probably get sued by another nonprofit builder, anyone else that, uh, that, that was a nonprofit status that wanted to build a house. And again, that we're going to, whatever we do, uh, if it's just an outright giveaway, then yes, that doesn't have to be tracked, and that doesn't trigger staff time, uh, but, but again, uh, giving the money away, and then if the status changes, it's still the same thing, that if, uh, if, if the income status changes, if we gave away $25,000, and then that person's status and their income changes the next year, then, then what would happen, we're still in the same boat, uh, as if we continued with payments, uh, because we gave away, uh, uh, city money, and now they really didn't qualify for that city money. Uh, so that's just kind of my thought. You know, I, I mean, it's, it's tough, and then at five homes a year, that's over $125,000 a year, and what I worry about is, is the fact that if it wasn't an impact on the city, but it is, because over the years, uh, $125,000 plus interest, and then what does that do to defer some projects that we're trying to, uh, make up within the city? Because remember, if we pass this, this is forever, and, unless, unless we decide to change that later on. So, that, that's kind of some of the thoughts, and, and when all these things occurred, Mr. Freya and I were the only ones on the council. So that's just a little bit of history that I wanted to give you, now let's listen to everyone else. Mr. Freya?
I like the deferment idea, it was my idea in the first place. Um, the, uh, spreading it out, and, uh, that, that extra bit of work in order to track it, I think that, that's the, the good, the goodwill we can offer. Um, I don't like the idea of just offering out money from the general fund, because the general fund is just, it's, uh, it's extremely vulnerable, um, the state maneuvers like PERS, it's also our Public Safety, um, Fund, and it, uh, it goes up and down with sales tax and property tax. It, it dropped all the way to nine million 10 years ago, now it's back up to about 15. Uh, and so, I like the idea, the deferral, I'm wondering, can, can, could be collected through, through, uh, the tax, through, through the tax system, the county tax system, or we have to collect it ourselves? Okay.
Collect it ourselves.
Okay, we have to collect it ourselves, and to me, I don't have a problem with that, um, I like what you've put forward here, uh, seven years, 14 years, 15 years, I like the idea, the deferment, we, the city's still getting its money, and we're still offering the goodwill to the organization that, uh, we all hold dear, near and dear. And that, that extra work we may need, I think is, that, that's the goodwill, um, and that's the, that's what we can offer, and should offer, I think, so that it, it, it doesn't financially impact the city in a big way, but it still makes, we still get the fees that do impact the city, I mean, if you put a house someplace, you got people, you have to serve them, and whenever you have to serve people, it costs money, whether it be water, sewer, public safety, roads, um, all of various services. So I like the idea of the deferment, as I said, it was my idea, uh, in the meeting when it came up, so, um, just a matter of conditions of the deferment, we said seven to 14 years, with interest, without interest, seven years without interest, and then 14, 15 with interest, if you're going to go longer term, then interest is worth collecting, shorter term, it's not worth it, I don't think, in a big way. So that's, those are my thoughts.
Okay. Mr. Lewis?
Mayor, um, well, I'm, I'm going to say that I'm not in, in favor of any kind of deferral, because every citizen that buys a house in Los Banos has to pay their share of, uh, taxes in, uh, for the categories that we're talking about, police, fire, our public works, uh, if we say that police and fire are, are important, and we're going to collect that upfront, what does that tell our other departments? Every single department is important when it comes to collecting these fees. We just approved tonight on our agenda for monies to be, uh, that had to be expended for our public works department, for, uh, I believe it was a water line that had to be repaired in a certain, uh, landscape and lighting district. So if, if your house is flooded because the, the pipes aren't working in your street, and we've deferred, uh, income that the city should have received from taxes for a house that was built, and I'm not saying our public works department would do that, but on a grand scale, that's what I'm looking at. Now, this doesn't just refer to Habitat for Humanities, if any of this goes through, it would be for any nonprofit, and it could be for a large nonprofit that's building a lot of houses, that may be a lot of income that the City of Los Banos can lose either over a period of, uh, five years without interest, or 15 years for deferral, which we may need to have at the time that it needs to be collected. If, once Habitat sells a house to a customer, they're out of the picture, we can't go back at them and say, this person didn't pay for their fees. If they default on the house, that means there's a whole lot of things that the city has to go through to try to collect that money, and it's not an easy task. Some of the other things that, uh, when, when this last house was built by Habitat for Humanities, is that they came to council and to the community, and they asked for, uh, the community to, uh, donate money for studs in the house. Whatever amount of studs that were purchased for that house, it was not passed on to the resident who purchased the home, the price did not lower. My recommendation would be that Habitat needs to look at, and this is coming from me, not from any council member, uh, they need to look closely at what they're going to sell that house for, and if the community gives them additional funds by a donation of studs to reduce their costs, then perhaps they can use that money to set aside for the fees that need to be paid to the city. We're on a slippery slope when we start to defer monies that a city needs to run, um, the organization and, and pay the bills, do all the repairs, the things that we are required to do, uh, in, in our budgeting, and we can't continue to just go down a slippery slope and give away money. Now, I have, over time, donated some of my time to help Habitat for Humanities, I believe in the organization, but I can't sit here and say that, you know, we need to give away tax dollars, uh, in deferment, because an organization has decided that, you know, they're going to sell a house for a certain dollar amount, and there's not enough to pay fees to the city. And I, I challenge anybody here that owns a home to come to the city and tell us that you don't have enough money to pay for deferred fees that are on your tax bill. How, how would you feel about that? Everybody has to pay those fees, and everybody who is a property owner, regardless of the income level, should be paying those fees, the city should not be asked to defer the fees. So, um, I, I truly believe that we're on a slippery slope when we do this, Habitat, again, is not the only organization that can come to the city who would be a nonprofit building homes for sale, there could be other organizations doing that. homes for sale. There could be other organizations doing that and they could be homes that are on a grander, grander scale. It says here the number of deferrals would be five a year, but I don't know if that, a deferral means a house or a project. So if it's a project, that means it could potentially be a lot of money that the city has to give up for a period of time. And, you know, for us to have to go after someone who defaults on a loan and Habitat has received their money, you know, the city is, could be basically out of taxes. And every time a home is sold, yes, we collect fees, but I don't think it's fair that the city should be asked to give up fees and defer them when that should be part of the process where Habitat sits down, draws up a contract with a potential home buyer, and that potential home buyer understands everything that they have to come up with as far as fees and what their monthly payment is going to be. It's the same thing that every homeowner does when they go to a mortgage company. Everything is disclosed. And that's just how I feel about it. And I will continue to work with Habitat if they will have me. I will continue to donate my time. But as a council member, I feel like we have a right to protect the money that comes in for taxes that support the services that we have to give our community. And I cannot choose one department over another to say that your department is more important than the other. Your taxes have to be paid. And that's how I stand on it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. So for me, I am between, initially, when I read about the waivers and the deferrals, I was not for the waivers because I figured that like, Ms. Louis was stating over there that the city does, you can't pick one department over another and the city does need to collect those monies. I was originally for the deferral because of what Habitat for Humanity is. It's a, it's a great thing for the people. They provide great services. But as of right now, I have to say that I'm completely leaning more towards deferral, but I have to say that I do agree that the fees should be paid and they should be paid on time. Because as Ms. Louis was saying, that everyone has to do that. And for someone, someone who is being helped through Habitat for Humanity, they are being done a great service by paying, I would imagine, half, not even 40, 50%, 40% of what everyone else is paying for a home. For me, I put myself in that situation and I wanted, me to pay $700 a month on a home and slight little bit more on top to pay the city seemed like a good idea to me. So I have to say, for me, I am not for the waivers or deferrals and I think that the fees should be paid as well.
Mrs. Silveira, anything else?
Yeah, you know, listen, and that's, we're all entitled to our opinions on how we, you know, what we think and what we think are worthy causes and what we think is the best use of our taxpayers' dollars. And we do have a duty to protect those things. And, you know, I'm just, I'm not painting the chicken little scenario where the whole world's coming crashing down because we gave Habitat for Humanity, you know, a partial waiver of fees. You know, and this is what I say. By listening to everybody's comments, it looks like, you know, part of what was asked for staff to come back with us to help set a policy in place so that every time Habitat has a home, that they, there's a process already in place so that you don't have to come and request a fee waiver and then get denied or be accepted in that fee waiver. So that's kind of what I thought was going to happen, but it seems like it's gonna be nothing. And so then, you know, just the next time you build a house, you can, you bring it back up and, you know, and see if the council agrees or disagrees with it at that time. My thought process, I shared my views on what I thought we should do. Obviously, you know, I'm one of five votes up here. And so, but what I was hoping to come out of this process is at least that we would have a policy that the next time that it happens, it could be answered. But it seems to me like no deferral, no waiver, everybody needs to pay their fair share is the direction we're going. And so at some point along the way, the council will have another, I'm guessing from Habitat or maybe another organization will come back and ask for a fee waiver and then they can have the discussion again. And so that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
One of the other points of history is, we had a, council was very adamant when the senior citizen housing came up and that all the fees be paid. At that time, the developers' fees, their impact fees be paid on that facility. And the seniors themselves, just like Habitat folks, are in a very limited income. But yet, those fees had to be paid and the council was very adamant that they be paid. Mr. Freya?
Oh, no, I didn't punch in again, I'm sorry.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify with Stacy that in this presentation tonight, if council goes forward, would one of the policies that we could recommend is that there is no policy or that we follow as policy currently what the city is doing? Could that be a recommendation?
Yes, that would be at the pleasure of the city council to direct staff not to create a policy. That is, that is up to you tonight.
Well, I don't know if there are any other comments and certainly I don't want to jump the gun if there are, but I would like to make a recommendation on this particular, Okay, I would like to make a recommendation that we do not consider a waiver or a deferral of any fees for nonprofit organizations in regards to fees that are collected by the city, impact fees that are collected by the city. And that, as the current city policy, the city does offer a division, a dividing of payments as long as it's paid by the time of occupancy, I believe it is, of the homeowner. And I don't know if there's any other policy that you have. Or by, within 24 months, I think is something else that you said, or was that something you recommended?
That's what we saw other cities do.
Okay.
It was whatever was less. It was either occupancy or 24 months, whatever, whatever is less. Typically, occupancy would come before 24 months typically, if a house is built within a timely matter. Building permits only last six months, although they can get extensions with various inspections. But typically, they're built in less than 24 months.
Okay. So I guess to shorten this, I'd like to recommend that all city impact fees for nonprofit organizations be paid by the time of occupancy for a residence.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Let's say, I mean, it's to Habitat's credit and also there to be, how wise they've been so far with finding homes that are already built and then maybe tearing them down to the extent of one, two by four, and that does not trigger an impact fee?
No, that would be considered a rebuild.
A rebuild.
A rebuild or reconstruction. They would get full credit like, as was described for 545 M Street. Even if it was destroyed by a fire or an earthquake, an act of God, they would still be given a credit.
So let's say they found, they started one home and two rehabs at the time. Would it still be in the scope to spread it out over three?
I think, well, it has been the city's policy to only charge it on that one home.
I mean, defer payment?
We do, we do have the flexibility to require it if, in this instance, we had a unique situation in that we had three lots.
Right.
That we, technically, we created five out of it. And at the end of the day, we came out with five lots, although it was four homes, three facing M Street, one facing the alley. So that's, creatively, those are the kinds of things we could probably bring to the table, be able to discuss. The issue at hands was, what the request at hand was a waiver. And so that's what we were considering. Although I am glad that we were able to come to a solution and divide the payment.
Yeah, I like that because you divided it and then, and then one home, the other home, and it didn't have to be due all at once. And I think that just because it's a rehab home and they didn't have to pay the $25,000, they're still getting a new home, basically.
Yes.
And, and so whether it's a stick-up or ground-up construction or a, almost a total rebuild, I think, I think people need to share it in the impacts of those homes because everyone's basically getting a nice place to live. So that's, that's gonna, so we could, that's a possibility within your purview that we could continue that?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a motion on the floor, but I would like to ask a question of our council on the motion that I made. Since I made it for, just stated that basically it's homes, do I need to add in there that it is for new homes rather than existing homes that the impact fee is not due on?
No, because there is no fee for existing homes.
Okay, all right.
And it applies to all, all builders and not just nonprofits. We extend that occupancy to all builders. So it's deferred, I think it might even be deferred by law till occupancy. But that's what we do and it sounds like that's what the policy's gonna continue to be.
Okay. Here, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Lewis, as stated and cannot be repeated by the mayor because he doesn't remember all that. And you got that, Bill?
Yes.
Okay. And second by Mrs. Johnson-Santos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?
No.
No.
Okay. So was, let me get that straight. Was it three to two? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Let's go on to item number 11, advisement of public notices, three reports. And let's go, Stacy, you're already on?
Yes. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So the first-
Wait a minute, let me, let me get back here. Okay, you're good.
Okay. The first public hearing is for Racket Club Estates. They are requesting a revision to conditions of approval for vesting tentative tract map number 2015-04 for the subdivision of approximately three acres into 14 residential units in the medium density zoning district. The second item is for conditional use permit and categorical exemption for double R grill located at 1451 West Pacheco Boulevard, Suite G. The request is to allow the use of a type 47 alcohol license for the on-sale of general alcohol in conjunction with a bona fide eating establishment. And then the third item is for revision to final development plan number 2015-01 for South Point at Regency Park. This would be consider revisions, it's an addendum, it's providing additional elevations within the final development plan for that particular project. Those public hearings will be held on Wednesday, June 13th at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Let's go on to item 12, city manager, report.
Where did it go? I have a report pursuant to Government Code Section 54953C3, executive compensation. On May 7, 2018, based upon my performance review, community economic, community and economic development director's salary was increased to $96,360 annually, retroactive to February 1, 2018. Congratulations to Chief Marison on being recognized as career firefighter of the year. Congratulations to Mr. Ramirez for being recognized as volunteer firefighter of the year and actually becoming the most recent career firefighter of the year. So congratulations, Juan. I know there are votes, votes still to be counted, but congratulations to Councilmember Silveira. Look forward to working with you in your new capacity in January. On a personal note, and I hope, I hope you're not at home watching, but tomorrow is my daughter's 16th birthday. Hopefully, you're not at home watching, but if you are, happy birthday. Thanks.
You get this?
Oh, on the computer?
Yes.
It isn't one of the Tahoe stations, or, okay.
They're streaming it if they're watching.
Oh, okay, yeah. Yeah, I didn't think we were that important that it was gonna be a trucky station. Okay, all right. Let's go on to item 13, city council member remarks. Tonight, we'll start with Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything to report this evening.
Okay, you. Let's go on to Mr. Silveira.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, congratulations to Tim and Juan on your firefighter of the year awards. And I did, I just wanted to, you know, I know that we're not allowed to campaign from the dice, but the campaign is over. So I just wanted to say thank you to the folks that supported, volunteered their time and endorsed my candidacy for Mersey County Supervisor. The way that the numbers sit right now, we're sitting at roughly 62% of the vote, but there still are quite a few votes to be counted. There's, the county has a few issues with their, they are called their tabulating machines. And so there's still, last I heard, there's 14,000 absentee and mail-in ballots to be counted, along with another, excuse me, 12,000 of those, and then 1,400 provisional ballots. And so the numbers look good, but ultimately, I'm waiting to get that call from Barbara Levy over at the county office and certify the election. And so I am very much forward to catching my breath in the munch of June because it's been a crazy ride for the last 120 days. I want to, you know, I, we had some healthy discussion, I'll call it, up here this evening and I, and I'm okay with that. It's, you know, we all have differing opinions on the way we see the world and I'm never afraid to share mine and I'm glad that the folks up here aren't afraid to share theirs. And hopefully, in my new position, we will continue to have that good, healthy discussion, discussion and working relationship. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Okay, let's go on to Mr. Freya.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, Tim Marison. Congratulations, Juan Ramirez. Once again, Los Banos showing the best of the best on a regular basis. As far as we can tell, statistically, the odds are that you are, will be supervisor-elect. Congratulations, Mr. Silveira, and look forward to working with you up there if I happen to get reelected in the fall. In your new capacity, most likely. And yes, the conversation tonight was very, very good. Anyone that watched the meeting tonight saw democracy at work, Republican, a republic, democracy at work. And it's, it's a beautiful thing. And I think, oh, I had a question. Do we know, are we gonna have the Flag Day scheduled celebration here next Wednesday night? I haven't heard anything from anyone. We've done it every year forever.
Do we usually put that together or would be a contact request?
I haven't either.
That'd be the Elks, right?
The Elks.
Yeah.
The Elks and the veterans. Okay. So that's traditionally done on the Wednesday, second Wednesday in June for Flag Day. So we'll find out and then we'll get the word out some way.
City manager said he'd follow up for you.
Okay, thank you. And Flag Day is, May, June, July, a lot of patriotic holidays. You have Memorial Day and then you have Flag Day and then you have the Fourth of July, Independence Day. So, you know, the flag, the American flag stands for, stands for some very important things. And it is, it waves tall and proud because of, because of the people who shed their life, shed their blood for that flag. That's why those red stripes are there. So let's not forget that in these times. And have a wonderful summer. Thank you.
Thank you for saying that, Mr. Freya. Let's go on to Mrs. Santos.
Thank you. I also wanted to say, Scott, I've been watching the numbers and I'm glad that you're up. That'd be wonderful. Also, I would make another comment if I could to Habitat for Humanity. I want to say once again, I do really, really appreciate the things you guys do. Vote aside. I think that you guys do a really good job with what you do. So I just wanted to state that as well. Thank you.
Okay. And, yes, congratulations, Scott. The firefighters tonight, Tim and Juan, thank you so much for what you, that you've done for the city, what you're going to do for the city. And it's another continuation of the, of the many people who- the, of the many people who have grown up here or, and decided to stay in Los Banos, and that's the important part, decided to stay in Los Banos and make this your home. And we welcome people that would like to do that. And I think the things that we are putting in place, this council is putting in place is, are very important in the continuum that, that it's going to help this city grow. Regardless of what anyone says, it's not the city council that's making this city grow, it's growing on its own. We have 725 babies born in this community every year. So, then you figure the 725 plus another 5 to 600, we're at 300 building permits times 2.2 people, we have another 600, 700 people that are moving here. So, we could have as many as 1,200 more, 1,200 or more new citizens every year in this community. So, I will tell you that, not that we're encouraging it, but when we reach 50,000, a whole new, all these new doors open up because then we're not considered a rural community anymore. We have another designation, and then the federal government and the state monies flow to us from different directions because we are of that population. And we're considered urban, not rural. So, the city's going to grow. And it's not because the five of us are saying, "Grow city." It's growing on its own. And I think now that Mr. Silveira is, I'm sure he's going to be confirmed, we've got another ally at the county because I see, I see good things happening with another vote. And the reason I said I would support him is because he wants to support the city of Los Banos. And so, the four of us, remember, we're going to hold him to that. So, it's important that we have a voice at the county, very important. And with the Measure V, Alex and I attended a meeting today, and the project list that the council approved, which included the walkout to the college and a safe route to the college, and also Pioneer Trail as a, as a priority project. Now, those projects are attainable because they are $45 million respectively and also $3 to $4 million respectively for the, for the walk. The bypass was $500 million, and there was no way that was ever going to be built because everyone wanted to keep it at number one. And in the process, it was too expensive, so it stays at number one, and we didn't get anything. And as I told you many times, my father was on the planning commission when that was approved in 1962. So, where are we all these years later? No further than we were in 1962. Yeah, Bud's nodding out there. So, we have a real shot at, maybe that's the wrong word, we have, we have a real chance at, to further the development of this community and to make sure that not only we have other ways of transportation from east to west, but we improve our air quality and yet we don't destroy the commerce in Los Banos. We need your support. We approved a, to bring a tax measure, and we're going to be asking the citizens for, and we're going to be writing that language. And if the citizens can see clear to, after the language is sunshine and everyone has input, public input, that it's something that this community wants, it's going to help us a tremendous amount. So, stay tuned for more information on our, on our tax measure, which will be coming up in the coming months. And Pastor, welcome to our community. And if we can, please send us that information so we can, we can come out and visit you. So, with that, there is no closed session, not being held, and are there any other council comments? If not, I will adjourn this meeting at 8:47.